Agenda. So, our secretary was supposed to be bringing, is supposed to be bringing the agenda. Do you have a copy?
I have a copy.
I have a copy here. And then I have it in my laptop, but I don't have a projector.
Okay.
Does anybody want to share this one?
I mean, if you can kind of...
Was it sent to you? Is that the one you were mailing?
Yeah.
It was sent. So you guys should actually all have copies. Do you guys want this one in the meantime? Or will you leave your...
Well, I could do the same thing with my phone, too.
Thank you. Does anybody right now like, oh my god, I need a fiscal copy of the agenda in front of me right now? We are in compliance, so... I'm just being polite and making sure everybody's comfortable with that before I call the meeting to order. I'd rather respect you, can I? Yeah? All right. I'm going to call the special meeting of the board to order. Call to order at 6:18. Thanks, guys, for coming. We do have some time-sensitive issues that need to be addressed. So I really appreciate you guys coming out and, you know, fitting this into your schedule. I know that during the transition, this is a lot of work, and so I appreciate what a good job everybody's doing. Having said that, would somebody like to volunteer to be the pledge of allegiance? Director Sevillez.
Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for the record, our recording secretary is not here. Can I get a volunteer to be our recording secretary? Director Sevillez will be our recording secretary for this meeting and be taking the minutes. Roll call. Mary Del Munoz.
Chris.
Anthony Manzano.
I'm here.
Jackie Carrillo.
Here.
Kathy Leo.
Here.
Perla Flores.
Here.
Miguel Vargas.
Present.
Michelle Porzantes.
Present.
Karina Cruz.
Here.
Dolores Duñez. Keith Servilis.
Here.
Winnie Verdugo. Marcia Guzman. Cynthia Sandoval. Roland Lopez. And I am here. We do have forums, so let's move on to public comments. Limited two minutes per speaker. Do I have any public comment? Do I have any public comment? Seeing as we do...
I don't have a public announcement. I know when the directors will be having an opportunity to have announcements.
We will... Well, do you have an announcement?
For questions or comments, but it's an opportunity for the directors to have that.
Is it regarding a specific agenda item?
No, it would be a non-agenda. Or it could be specific, but I'm just curious when it would be.
I'm only to hear your comment right now. Public comment is closed, so if you have a comment, Director, please go ahead.
I don't have a comment, just nothing else.
Okay. Moving right along, we've got Agenda Item 5, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Approval of a Second Signor for Fiscal Year 2016-2017. Do I have a nomination for the second signer?
I'd like to nominate the President.
Do I have a second?
I'll second him.
I accept that nomination. I've got a nomination and a second for me to be the second signer. Since this is a fiscal matter, I'm going to make this a roll call vote. Mary Del Munoz.
Yes.
Anthony Manzano.
Yes.
Jackie Carrillo.
Yes.
Jackie, is it Carrillo?
Carrillo.
My bad. Kathy Leo.
Yes.
Perla Flores. Miguel Vargas.
Yes.
Michelle Porzantes.
Yes.
Karina Cruz.
Yes.
Dolores Duñez, absent. Keith Servilis.
Yes.
Winnie Verdugo, absent. Marcia Guzman, absent. Cynthia Sandoval, absent. Roland Lopez, absent. And me, yes. The vote is 10-0. Item number six, Discussion and Possible Action for Approval of LA 32 Neighborhood Council Budget for Fiscal Year 2016-2017, submitted by the Budget and Finance Committee. Do I have any public comment on this? Do I have any board comment?
We have to have a motion first before we move forward.
Is that a point of order?
Yes, it is.
Do I have any motions on this?
I make a motion to move forward the request for reconsideration to amend Item 11 of the June 1st Agenda that LA 32 utilizes the end of the fiscal year funds to make the following purchases total $2,379.31 for three sets of hand radios, 30 t-shirts for board directors with logos, LA 32 logos, payment of street permit for Election Day, two table covers, and any remaining balance should be used to purchase LA 32 and C branding outreach items such as tote bags, lend yards, bins.
So you have a motion on the table to move Item 7 out before we discuss Item 5? Is that the motion? You want to discuss Item 7?
Correct. That's the one we're on right now, no? Did I say the wrong one?
No, I actually, I've got Item 6.
Oh, we're on Item 6, I'm sorry. Then let me take back that motion. We're on Number 7. So we're on Item Number 6, so then I motion that we... I motion that LA 32 Council approves the LA 32 Neighborhood Council Budget for Fiscal Year 2016-2017, submitted by the Budget and Finance Committee.
Do I have a second? You got the motion and the second? I've got Director Porzantes.
Sorry about that. I was thinking, oh, we're on 7.
No worries. I thought you were moving that one up. I've got Director Porzantes moving to approve the LA 32 Neighborhood Council Budget for Fiscal Year 2016-2017, submitted by the Budget and Finance Committee. I've got Director Carrillo executing that. Do I have any discussion or public comment?
In order for board members to vote on this, they must have completed their financial agreement.
Sorry. Budget admission. Do I have any board discussion? Director Manzano?
I'm reviewing the budget compared to the one that was approved by the previous board. I don't have a date on it, but it says on the other side, committed from the previous board. And I'm realizing that there's a reduction in the total fiscal amount by $5,000, which has been incorporated through the Budget and Finance Committee review yesterday. I'd like to make a few amendments. And then after the amendments, we could go through discussion. There will be amendment for the membership and outreach committee, amendment for the arts and culture committee, amendment for the sports and recreation committee.
Is that a point of order, Director Manzano? Are you making multiple?
No, I'm going to just let you know which ones they are, and then I'll make a motion. There'll be an amendment for the beautification committee and an amendment for the education committee. One, two, three, four, five. So I'd like to make an amendment to... I'd like to make a motion to hear several amendments, five of the... Six of which are from the committee, one of which is for category 400.
Can you state your full amendment?
Specific without discussion?
Well, you're making a motion for an amendment.
Right. To hear those items, which would be amendments for items, membership and outreach, arts and cultures, sports and recs, beautification, public safety, education committee, one that's not even listed, which is the environmental green committee, and then as well as the neighborhood purposes grant category 400.
Since you have notes in front of you and we all can't write that fast enough, can you just list the membership, beautification, education, arts and culture?
Correct. Just put a mark next to it if you'd like. Membership and outreach, arts and culture, sports and recs, beautification, education committee, environmental green committee, and category 400.
So you're making a motion to amend the budget, but you're not specifying your motion?
Why can't you be specific? But that would be part of the discussion. I could be specific, we could all talk about it and elaborate and perhaps have a consensus.
I'm not sure we can talk about a motion that's not specific to the amendment. So, I mean, you can continue to make amendments to the budget, but we need to at least know the amendments that you're going to be making.
Okay. Then, membership and outreach, which is the first one on the list, to reduce it by 1,000. Arts and culture, reduce it by 1,000. And then the sports and recs committee, move it to category 300. Beautification committees, move it to category 300. Education committee, move it to category 300. A question why environmental green is not even listed, period. And then, an amendment to category 400 to reduce that as well. And for this match.
Reduce it to what?
Probably by $1,000. Reduce it to 3,000.
So I've got a motion on the table to amend the budget in the following ways. Membership and outreach committee, reduced by 1,000. Arts and culture, reduced to 3,000. Sports and recs, move to category 300, community improvement. Beautification committee, move to category 300, community improvement. Education committee, move to category 300, community improvement. And the neighborhood purpose grant, reduced to 3,000. Do I have a second for that motion?
The sports, I have a question. The sports and recs that will be moved to the category 300 or it will be...
That is the motion on the table, that sports and recs will be moved to category 300, community improvement. Is that correct, Director Manzano?
That's correct.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion? There is no second. Go back to the original motion. Director Porzantes, correct me if I'm wrong, that was... You did move to approve the LA 32 Neighborhood Council Budget for Fiscal Year 2016-2017, submitted by Budget and Finance Committee?
Correct. So what it is, the former board made only a recommendation, but that doesn't mean that we have to...
Before we have discussion, we have a motion. Do I have a second for that?
Motion to... Why, I made that motion to move that forward.
I did have a second.
You did have a second. So are we on board discussion now?
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is, you have two sheets. You have the recommended from the previous board, and then you have the draft. If you look at it, the recommended from the previous board is at 42,000. Why? Because last fiscal year, the council members voted to give all neighborhood councils $5,000 more, so that's why we were budgeting 42,000. We thought that we're going to get those $5,000 again this fiscal year, so the former board is doing a recommendation on 42,000, but it wasn't on 42,000, because funding department already informed me that it is $37,000. So that is where my committee put together the budget for the $37. The major changes from the previous board to this board is, we put... We would like to recommend NPG for schools and organizations to come and ask for grants. Community improvement project, we had to reduce it down to 1,000 because we had to drop down to 37,000. Unless we take out of the committees, but we thought that the committee should have all 1,500. Membership and outreach, 3,000, so they are the ones that are out there making this board looking great, so we figured 3,000 would be good for them. Arts and culture, kite fest is a big... Is ours. Kite fest belongs to us, and we want to put a big amount on the kite fest. We didn't do a big amount on land use and bylaws because they rarely co-sponsor, but we did leave something in there in case they needed for something. Operation 100, the pink one on the top, you really cannot move the facilities related at space rental because that's a set amount already. That amount is there for the rental for the rest of the year, for the public storage, and for the senior center. Miscellaneous expenses, we're going to be business cards eventually, if not maybe another banner, whatever the board may like to request, and we're always in need of office advice. The board retreat, we recommended 1,000 because we are going to have a board retreat eventually. Whatever was not used, we can always move around. So this is not set in stone. We can approve it or not today, or amend, like the way Mr. Manzano was putting in his request. But in the future, if we want to amend something, we can always go back and reallocate. And then, obviously, the yellow category, which is the 500 elections, we didn't put any... Anything there because there's no election this year.
Do I have any other board comment? Director Manzano?
Just going over the exact information that Michelle discussed, which is the budget as proposed or as draft on that document. Many of the items which I just suggested should be amended, meaning category 200 specifically indicates outreach. The sports and recreation committee will be doing plenty of projects in our local parks, but that is considered a community improvement. The beautification committee, when they're out there cleaning the streets, removing graffiti, bulky items, those are community improvements, not outreach. The education committee is capable of enhancing the academics for our youth. Those are community improvement projects. So there's at least three committees that should not be categorized as outreach because it's already indicated that membership and outreach committee is utilizing $3,000 for expenses. If we're adding it all up, it might look good on paper that 51% of our budget is allocated for outreach, but in a practical sense, it does not perform well for the community. That's why category 300 is in place for community improvements, so it's best that the stakeholders see the benefits of these community improvements. And the only way to do that would be to move several of the committee's allocations into category 300. There's also no indication of the environmental green committee. I'm curious why there's no allocation for funds for that committee. And then the business and economic committee, I'm familiar with it as well. I don't feel that it needs $1,500 total. But reviewing this draft, just as the treasurer indicated, and maybe some of the other directors are having a chance to review it as well, community improvements are tangible programs, projects, services that the stakeholders see out on the streets. They do not fall under category 200.
Well, I mean, I guess it seems to me that that would depend on how each of those committees choose to use their budgets. Until those committees choose to use their budgets, we're not actually certain.
Okay, but then what that does then is, obviously, is indicating to the people that less than 3% is going to community improvement. So how do we rational to the rationale to the stakeholders at a reasonable expectation that we're providing less than 5% to enhance and improve our communities, being it that I'll take the easiest one, beautification committee? If they're going to spend all day passing out flyers, making phone calls, putting banners, putting up signs, and doing outreach, then therefore the community... The beautification committee in itself will not be doing any community improvement projects because that's what the budget reflects.
Yeah?
How can the director estimate what the beautification committee is going to do when the beautification committee has not even met yet?
Easily, because the communication... The beautification committee is expected to have monthly services to the community. We do monthly cleanups on Mariana, on Valley, on Alhambra Avenue, on Huntington, on Eastern, on Monterey Road, but when that group is out there functioning for the stakeholders, it's practical and logical that it's a community enhancement or a community improvement. It's not outreach. They're out there actually removing graffiti, painting fire hydrants, planting trees, picking up trash, and those funds, while being expended, will fall under category 300. Now, if you expect the beautification committee to perform and do beautification, then they need money in that category to spend. If you expect the beautification committee just to pass out flyers, which is outreach, then there will not be no community improvements.
My point, beautification committee hasn't said or done anything about passing out flyers. We haven't even met yet, as a matter of fact.
Correct. But the budget category should indicate that the beautification committee will be spending this money out of category 300, meaning those... That's where the tangible services are to the stakeholders.
Should beautification meet first, decide what the priorities are, and as Director said, we can always move one thing around to another as our needs fit?
Correct. But if you're doing that month by month by month by month with not having a guidance or direction, then the beautification committee will say, well, we're going to have our direction first without having a set category of funds, because the stakeholders are who we're serving. And if a stakeholder looks at this, like I'm showing, less than 3% is going to community improvements. I am a stakeholder, and I would hopefully that the neighborhood council would spend at least 10%, maybe 25% in community improvements, because that's what we look for out on the streets, tangible improvements.
It seems to me that the purpose of one of the driving principles in the neighborhood council is to increase public involvement with city government. And outreach is one of the driving purposes of the entire neighborhood council system. Director, agree?
So my question is, do we just... Are we moving... How do we... Do we vote on where each of these committees should be and to what category? Because our sports and recs can be an outreach because you're reaching out to the community, reaching out to the kids, reaching out to whoever. Community improvement, I see as you're actually seeing something done, like cleaning up, painting, or whatever it is that is tangible that you're seeing when you drive by. So my question is, do we vote on which one gets moved to which category?
Well, we... I mean, you can make a motion for another amendment. Treasurer Porzantes, do you have any?
Community improvement project is if we're going to repair something permanently. Let's say, for example, you know, we're using... Sorry, we keep using beautification, right, as an example, but beautification does a cleanup, and they co-sponsor it with an organization. And they want to repair plants all on Huntington Drive, so the plants are going to be there permanently. So then the plant amount would come out of CIP, Community Improvement Project, because those plants are going to be there permanently on that plant on Huntington. Or if they decide to do something like repair a sidewalk, and then we're going to pay a certain amount, a certain fee, you know? Or if we're going to buy graffiti removal to remove it, you know? But then also, you can move the amounts. And some people are not comfortable moving amounts every month. They feel that that's... That's, I don't know, for whatever reasons, they just don't want it. And some people are, that's fine, you know? All I can tell you is that just because we voted on it today, it's not set in stone that that's it. You can never ever get more or less, or we can never change it around, because it could be changed around. This is what we recommend. If there's a committee that wants more, we can amend now, just like what Mr. Manzano did. Or we can leave it as is and go with it, and if we'd like to change it in the future, we can change it. But community improvement project doesn't have to have a big lumps of amount, because I know in the recommended previous board, it did have a big amount. But obviously, that big amount was because we were estimating at 42,000, but we're not at 42,000 a month. I would like to leave 4,000 for the NPGs, because we do have a lot of schools out there that might come and recommend or request, or we have nonprofits that are most likely going to come and ask. And it's good to always assist or help a nonprofit or our organization, but... Membership and outreach, I think, does deserve that amount. The kite fest, too. I know you guys are wondering, well, the expenses on the kite fest, two years ago, I think we were at 8,000, and last year, I think she spent... We spent, I want to say, about 4,000, maybe 3. And that was only because we used most of the amount for election. So it really needed more for the kite fest, but we had to either put all of our, you know, money in the election or the kite fest. So this year, I... That's why we're making that big recommendation, 4,000 for arts and culture, to make sure the kite fest, you know, continues to... I mean, that's ours. My understanding, we, LA 32, started that, and it belongs to us.
I'm just curious, as a point of information, Director Manzano, have you taken treasurer training?
Yes, of course.
The full... I'm not talking about the every two years. I'm talking about the full forum treasurer training.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have any more board discussion? Director Manzano?
Specifically mentioning the arts and culture committee. I was actually president when this was initiated, and it was because of the foresight and the opportunity to give each of the committees an opportunity to express their mindset, to be creative, and allow them to go out and be of service to the stakeholders, that Steve Boland, who was the chair of the arts and culture committee, actually came up with the idea, which is an excellent idea. Michelle is correct, it does belong to the neighborhood council. But the reason why that kite festival initiated was because we sort of allowed the arts and culture committee to have money to spend. Before that, none of the committees had any money. So for us to expand our service to the stakeholders, the arts and culture committee is not the only one that has this great idea for a kite festival. I'm sure the education committee can come up with another yearly event, which I'm already proposing, which is the spelling bee, which would equal or surpass the kite festival. We could have the sports and recreation committee host yearly campouts at Ascot Park, which could surpass or equal the kite festival. So what's happening is, you're sort of realizing that, yes, we do have to give money to the committees, but if you give such a large amount specifically to the arts and culture committee with the anticipation that they're going to serve for the kite festival, you're sort of drawing back from the education committee. You're taking a little bit of from the beautification committee. You're taking something from the sports and recreation committee that they might have that brain trust. They might have that great yearly activity.
Well, again, I mean, that's generally how budgeting works. A little bit gets moved from here to there, particularly when there's been cutbacks. I hear what you're saying, but the budget and finance committee recommended this budget. Do I have any more board discussion?
I have a comment only on the sports and recs committee. I would probably, I mean, I'm a front outdoors lady, and I would probably like, if possible, to add a little more to that area, because I know with the new activity on the Skype apart, I mean, an event would be great for the kids, and it would be very encouraged for the community.
Does that mean you're making that motion right now?
Yes.
You're making a motion to...
To add more money to sports and recs meeting.
How much more money?
I would say another thousand.
Where do I get to come from?
I don't know if the website menus is set. Maybe a little more from... I don't know, how flexible will be, maybe in hospitality. I see that, I mean, it can be run and around, because is the website kind of set for every year? Yeah?
175 a minute.
I'm sorry?
175 a minute.
So I still need a specific motion?
Okay.
I'll be here. All right, thank you.
I would say we need moving 500 dollars, so it's from arts and culture committee. Because I feel I have been at the kite fest, and it's great, but I think it can be more supported financially from the community, because it's already set. And I also see that the sports and recs committee is not an effort, but if we put to an event, the community will respond possibly.
So with all due respect, Director, if you're making a comment about it, about the budget in general, if you're making a motion to amend, then make the motion to specifically amend.
Okay. I would say at least another, I don't know if I can, from 500 to 1,000, from the arts and culture committee to the sports and recs meeting.
So you want 500 or 1,000?
From 500 to 1,000.
We can't... Treasurer, you cannot have a...
The excessive amount is 500 or 1,000.
I would say 1,000.
So I have a motion on the table to amend the budget and take... So I have a motion on the table to amend the budget and take, uh, 1,000 from, say that again?
Arts and culture committee to the sports and rec.
So I have a motion on the table to amend the budget, uh, to increase, uh, the sports and recreation to 2,500 dollars and to decrease the arts and culture committee to 3,000 dollars. Do I have a second on that? I don't have a second on that motion, so do I have any more discussion on the motion that is on the table? Director Correa?
So I'm the chair of that, sports and rec, and I was reading, um, Director Manzano's notes, reading, um, which the, um, it's like to have the camping and so forth. I don't even know if there's camping gear, I don't know if there's tents, I don't, I don't have any of that information yet. So during this time, I'll be, um, figuring out what I want to do and knowing if there's inventory for that, because if there's nothing, then I would have to buy, purchase that stuff, and, um, so I would, you know, want to investigate more and find out what inventory we have on, on hand to know what the sports and rec could be for. Uh, I think sports and rec also, uh, considered like a hiking or so forth, but, um, and he's turned back to his notes on camping, so.
General comment?
General comment, yes.
Okay. Director Manzano?
The two previous directors are, are, are pretty well on, on track on sort of reviewing and adjusting the draft. I've done this every year, probably the last 10 years, and it's pretty easy. You just need a clear understanding of how we could all work together. Again, like Mrs. Correa was suggesting, to do her activities, if she does have to purchase camping gear, equipment, tents, and whatever else might be needed to spend the night overnight with proper permission, again, that will come out of community improvement project expenses. These items will not be, sports and rec specifically, an outreach event. Now, the way the budget was prepared, it is almost intended that every committee also provides outreach. That is part of the basic idea, like you mentioned, Chair, that that's our guiding factor, outreach. But if all the money is only allocated to outreach, it would limit us extremely in servicing category 300. But this time again, I'd like to make an amendment, and I'll repeat them, which would be the membership and outreach committee to be reduced by a thousand, even the arts and culture committee to be reduced by a thousand, that the sports and recreation committee category be moved to category 300 for community improvements, beautification committee be moved to category 300 for community improvements, education committee be moved to category 300 for improvements. So when the time comes, and each of these committees, including the sports and rec, wishes to make these purchases, they fall under a community improvement category, and we don't have to spend a month or even a week to adjust the budget later, when we can solidify this now.
Director Manzano, can I ask, is that, is this the same motion you just made?
It is.
Okay, so you're making the same motion again?
Exactly the same motion now. Now, with, now that the directors are, are being a little bit more involved in understanding, maybe there'll be a second now.
It actually isn't, because you didn't mention the neighborhood purpose grant, but I'm assuming that was just an oversight.
Well, I was also, I'm curious on how can the environmental green is on this, what happened to that committee?
Treasurer? Do you want to answer to that?
There's no chair.
I mean, we have no committee right now.
There's no committee, there's no chair. That's what we did do it, because there was no chair.
So the idea, because there's no chair, is that the budget committee will, the budget and finance committee will not service the stakeholders in the environmental green category?
That was a recommendation. And if there's a chair, then will we allocate and put money on there?
Are we in a period of discussion, or are we voting on an amendment?
I think we need a second first, but I do have an amendment.
Well, I started to have a little crosstalk. So you're, I have a motion on the table to, uh, make an amendment to the budget. It is the same motion, correct, Director Manzano?
Correct.
It is the same motion to reduce, uh, membership and outreach by a thousand, arts and culture by a thousand, um, sports and rec, beautification, and education be moved to the, uh, 300, uh, community improvement 300 category, and the neighborhood purpose grant be reduced by a thousand. Do I have a second? I do not have a second. Do I have any further comment from the board?
Yes, I just want to clarify that camping gear is not a community improvement project. Camping gear is considered outreach, because we do not keep that, that gets given up. And most of these things, we, we, as you will learn and see, we co-sponsor with organizations and other nonprofits and political figures, because sometimes we try, we try to do it, it, $37,000 is nothing. So when we co-sponsor with schools, when we co-sponsor with other nonprofits, it's what makes it community together. They put their input, we put our amount in, and that's what brings it in together. But I know, I think we were talking something about camping gear, and it goes under a community improvement project. No, it does not. Camping gear is not community improvement project. That is, that is considered a, an outreach. It's not, it's not something permanent that stays on the ground or, or there.
I'm going to go around Vice President first.
Yes, uh, board members, you know, we're discussing the budget, and you've heard from Director Manzano about how potentially we can use all this funding and how, you know, some of this money could be better spent toward all of these great events, right? And, and Director Manzano has some great ideas about the spelling bee that potentially could be a great event. Camping in Ascot Hills, it could be a great event, right? But, you know, events like these, they're not going to happen in a year, right? We don't even know if we can get a permit from the Department of Rector Parks to do camping in the park. We don't know where we're going to host the spelling bee, right? And I'm sure, there's a lot of us that are new, and I'm sure we all have great ideas, right? But these ideas, we're not, I'm sorry to tell us all, but they're not going to happen this year. And maybe they can, but if you really want them to be a successful event, then we need to wait. And we need to, we're going to be here for two years, for a while, most of us, and let's flush these out. Let's work with the community, right? So I think that we need to consider this, as this discussion is going on, that we don't need to move all this money around for these different events that haven't even happened yet, or that we think might be a good event to have, right? Let's, let's spend a year, um, you know, if we have an idea, to vet these with the community and to vet these with other people. So that's, that's what I'd like to say.
I'm sorry, yes, since I was late today, I'm not even sure what the discussion is about camping. You made a motion on the table about camping?
Amending.
An amending? So what was the original motion?
It's number six.
Was it just to, was it just to discuss the, the budget?
We are discussing, we are, um,
Number six.
Number six.
And that was, that I just, that's what I thought, okay. But since I was the maker of the motion, and it was discussed that we were to either table over here, and how did, how was it?
There was no motion to table. I have a motion on the table right now from, uh, Treasurer Crozanty with a second by Director Correa.
Well, I can't get into the discussions, I don't, I don't even know whether the camping came up and all that other came up as far as the budget's concerned.
This is just a general conversation about the budget that is, uh, before the council right now. So I have a motion on the table to, well, I've had several motions for amendments that have not gotten a second. And I currently have a motion I was able to approve, so we're currently in the process, uh, in discussion.
So that was my question, is where did those ideas come from? And how do we understand how that it's Mr. Manzano that's discussing?
Sheriff Hoffman? I mean, I think some of the stuff, some of these committees could be moved, because it is community improvement. Um, but some of these that, um, just what Manzano's saying, like sports rec, I don't think that should be moved, so.
I agree with some and there's great others.
Okay, so guys, just for the record, um, I know everybody's really new to this and just kind of getting their arms around stuff, but we are moving into a new fiscal year. The committees are going to start working, and they're going to start figuring out what they, like, uh, Vice President Robert said, they're, they're going to start figuring out what they do and do not need, and what they want and don't want to do. Thus far, we've only had two committee meetings, so I strongly encourage every committee chair to start calling their committees to meeting and, uh, start these discussions. But before we continue with a lot of crosstalk about amending the budget and things like that, one of the items on our agenda is, uh, a discussion of possible action regarding a board retreat, which, a lot of this will get covered in the retreat, where we can have these conversations about what are our priorities in the community, and what each one of us wants to see in the next two years and things like that. So, like Treasurer Crozanty said, um, we have a budget before us, we are moving into a new fiscal year. We don't have to approve this budget tonight, if y'all don't want to. But we can also do a lot of work to amend it as we go. So.
Did you have a public comment on that, a particular issue?
We're getting, I will open a public comment again. Do I have any more directors that want to comment on this before? Nope, okay. I will move back to public comment.
Yes, uh, I would like to ask in regards to the, uh, what was the word you called this campout?
I'm not sure how many minutes are we doing on that, or is somebody recording?
I was going to be generous and not start limiting comment, but it's how many of them will.
What was the title of this camping? The retreat, I was the word I was looking for. Anyway, for this retreat, I'd like to know, in the spirit of the City of Los Angeles, all 15 council districts, council persons, through the Department of Dunn, uh, they want the community to be involved in anything to do with any of the 95 neighborhood councils. In this particular one, I'm interested, I'm a stakeholder, and I want to go to that place. And I don't know if anyone else here that's a stakeholder or a constituent. You could be a stakeholder and not a constituent, is, would be interested in going, but I want to go. So the funds have to be appropriate for not just the 15 people.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Mr. Jack?
Yeah, so my understanding is that we do have a recommended budget now. And, you know, what we're trying to do is make some changes. So one of the things that I kind of, I was interested in Director Keith and what he said is, they haven't met. The committees haven't met, so you have a finance committee that's wanting to make adjustments, when you haven't got an order of recommendations from the committee. It's almost like backcourt. Shouldn't we first get recommendations from committees to see what they want? And I believe that environmental green is a standard requirement, so I'm wrong. So that has to be populated as well before you can decide whether or not they should be on the budget. How do you eliminate a whole committee? It doesn't make sense, but, so I understand, in a point, what Director Keith was saying is, let's have the committee meet first, then make the adjustments, because you can make, according to what you just said, you can make the adjustments anytime. It's not necessary to pass this new draft. You could still stay with the old one and change it as it goes. Thank you.
More public comment? Mr. Johnson?
I did a, finding out about this meeting, I did a random survey of the neighborhood councils surrounding it. Spile Heights, Lincoln Heights, Fort Myers-Saco, and Mcgander Agendas. None of them have really broached the 2016, 2017 fiscal year budget yet. You are a brand-new board, and like Mr., like Keith was saying, I think you need to step back, let the committees get together, formulate, come up with mission plans, whatever the draft of this. And most important, you need to advertise this to the community, so the stakeholders are involved in the process. I am sorry, a half hour, a budget and finance committee on a Monday, and then a follow-up meeting today, is a disservice to the stakeholders and the community. The stakeholders, you have a buy-in process on this too. Remember, we don't work for us, we work for the stakeholders. And one important fact, public safety. We just had a sexual assault at Ascot Park. Public safety may need money to put information out about a town hall meeting if they choose to do something like that. So that's something here, you probably are proceeding too fast on getting this budget in tonight. I will take a step back. Let the committee know your July meeting, that you're going to be working on this. Allocate a certain second time at your July meeting to do a need to segment with the committee, where they would like to see some of this money go. I think a lot of it has been a city workshop, but you know, you put a little tag here, a little tag here, sort of priorities. But to give the committee and the stakeholders the same in also implementing this budget, and you could get this done in August, and roll it and ratify it in.
Thanks, sir, do I have any more public comment?
I just have a question. Uh, was the money reduced this year?
It was only a one-time thing.
Because of the elections.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Is that what they said?
Yeah.
I didn't know that, but, yeah.
Alright, uh, I'm guessing I don't have any more public comment?
Or?
Uh, I don't know what committee, what subject I'm going to bring up, just 30 seconds. Uh, the, as you know officially, the, uh, there's not going to be a parade for the 4th of July celebration this year by the bicentennial, okay? Uh, I happen to be a bicentennial member. I'm not a board member, so I'm not the conflict of interest. I can talk about it till I'm blue in the face, or you kick me out of here. Some time ago, when, uh, Mickey, what's Mickey's last name? Mr. McGuire and Mrs. McGuire were board members back then. And I believe either Mr. Manzano was president or treasurer. I don't remember exactly when the date, I have bad memory, but there's records, and I know Mr. Manzano keeps immaculate records. Immaculate, he is such a good guy on that. I'd like to ask him if he can provide the records that he may have. He's not bound by the law, I don't know being a board member if he is or not, but since it's private papers, it's private personal property, he may not be bound by the law to furnish that information or even cooperate with us, but.
Mr. Travis, does this have to do with the budget?
Yes, absolutely. It's money that we spent that I voted against, two radios that cost 750 dollars. If there was an experiment, the experiment should be over. We haven't been served by them in any way, shape, or form, there hasn't been any classes, nothing by either one of the two gentlemen. Mickey already had.
Okay, sir, I'm going to stop you, it doesn't sound like.
He had a license, he had to get a license, and nothing's ever happened.
Okay.
Pretending to serve.
Thank you.
This money we spent.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close public comments. I do have a motion on the table. I don't recall, that's my bad, who seconded it. Do I have a second for your motion, Michelle?
Yes, you did, but I don't know who it was, I thought it was, uh, I thought it was Jackie, I thought it was Jackie. I know I wrote, oh wait, I wrote Jackie here. Jackie seconded it. I wrote it right there, Jane Correa seconded.
So we do have a motion on the table to approve this budget. I do have a second. We've had a lot of good conversation about this. We can still move to table this, if you guys want to. I do want to remind everybody that one of the things that Roberts Rules of Order says is that under no circumstances should undue strictness be allowed to intimidate members or limit full participation. So, having said that, Director Manzano, do you have one more thing you want to say?
Yes, I'd like to be in compliance of the allocation given to us by the City of Los Angeles, so I would like to make an amendment that would reduce category 300 from the old budget by 5,000 dollars, which would reduce it from 42 to 37, so we could be within our budget means, which will somewhat appear like what's on the, the draft proposal.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear what you're saying.
Well, the current budget that's been approved by the neighborhood council is just for 42,000 dollars.
Right.
Right, and this will exceed our budget allocation.
Right.
Without making any amendments or changes, like I was suggesting earlier, and to maintain our budget allocation of 37,000, I'd like to take away 5,000 dollars from community improvement projects. Just release them, minus 5,000 dollars. Then what will happen, it will start to look like this piece of paper over here, which is in front, which is the draft. We're not making any changes or amendments until you guys review your committees and understand what's going on. But just so that we're in compliance with the 37,000 dollars that's being allocated to us, how do we get there from 42? Please make an amendment or a motion to amend that we reduce category 300, which is 6,000 dollars, reduce it by 5,000 dollars. Therefore, we are within our budget allocation to 37,000 total for the fiscal cycle.
Well, the budget that's, the budget that's been moved, uh, by Treasurer Crozanty and seconded by Director Correa is the 37,000 dollar budget. So your motion to amend would have to amend each and every category. In essence. In essence, that's just semantics. You know, you want the, the budget that Director Crozante's motion, you want to amend this to read as the prior $42,000 budget, but simply with the community improvement project reduced by 5,000.
Correct.
Treasurer Crozante, just a point of clarification, this former budget, $42,000, that is both ...
Did someone second the amendment? Are we discussing that?
No, I have, before I even can get a second, this is readily available, this was handed out with everything else.
This one, yeah, everybody asked, this one. Yeah, they have both of them. Everybody's got both of them.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Yeah, both.
Makes sense. Move money around anyway.
Do I have a second to that amendment? I still don't have a second to any of your amendments, Director Manzano. So I have a motion on the table to approve the budget that came out of Budget and Finance. The approval of LA 32 Neighborhood Council budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017, submitted by the Budget and Finance Committee. I have a second from Director Correio. I think we've probably had, we've exhausted ourselves in conversation here, so I'm going to go for the roll call vote on that. Director Munoz?
Yes.
Director Manzano?
No.
Director Correio?
Yes.
Director Leo?
Yes.
Director Flores?
Yes.
Director Vargas?
Eligible.
Sorry, I should have said Vice President, please. Treasurer Crozante?
Yes.
Director Cruz?
Eligible.
Sorry?
Oh, no.
Can I vote for them? I'm eligible.
No.
I've taken all the party.
You're not on the board, sir. Director Duñez, absent. Director Sevillez?
Yes.
Director Verdugo, absent. Director Guzmán, absent. Director Sandoval?
Yes.
Director Lopez, absent. President Markovich, yes. By vote of?
Yays to ineligible.
One no.
One no.
One no.
There's your whole column.
Yeah, I'm just writing the votes. Eight, one, two.
Eight, one, two.
Eleven. Eight, one, zero, two. Eight, one, zero, two. It's eight, yes, one, like, zero, extensions, two ineligible, so it totals 11.
So by vote of eight, two, one, two, zero, two, two, the motion does pass. Moving right along, Agenda number seven, discussion of possible action regarding Treasurer Crozante's request for a reconsideration and amendment on item 11 of the June 1st, 2016 agenda, that LA 32 Neighborhood Council utilize the end of fiscal year funds to make the following purchases total $2,379.31, for three sets of hand radios, 30 t-shirts for board directors with LA 32 logo, payment for street permit from election day, two table covers, and any remaining balance to be used to purchase LA 32 Neighborhood Council branding outreach items such as tote bags, lanyards, and pens.
Well, a point of interest, Madam Chair.
I don't acknowledge this, sir.
I'd like to move that motion forward. Item number seven, that LA 32 utilizes the end fiscal year funds to make the following purchases with total $2,379.31, for three sets of hand radios, 30 t-shirts for board directors with LA 32 logo, payment for street permit from election day, two table covers, and any remaining balance to be used to purchase LA 32 NC branding outreach items such as tote bags, lanyards, and pens.
So I have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second from Director Sevillez. I'll open that to...
Public comment.
I'll open that to public comment.
Can you explain the reconsideration?
Treasurer Crozante, do you want to explain your reconsideration?
The reconsideration is because we approved an event for July 2nd. The former board approved an event for July 2nd, which is the fireworks show. And on top of the approved event, we said we would, we would spend $300 on snacks, juices, water bottles, and so forth. Funding department has informed me that since that event is next fiscal year, that money, we cannot purchase it with this fiscal year money to purchase snacks that could be purchased on that day. If we had to pay like the rides or the fireworks show or something that needed time to get paid now, that we had to make the payment now for July 2nd event, the co-sponsor event, then we could do it. But because we specifically said when we voted that it would be for snacks, water bottles, juices, for that event that we would give out, we were not able to. So he did say you could either go back and reconsider the motion, but obviously that was approved back in, I think, May. So I would like to reconsider this to increase the amount so we can use it for branding items, and we can have more branding items to give out that day, tote bags, lanyards, and that sort. And we also are going to get $200 reimbursed from Empower LA because they are reimbursing all neighborhood councils for the polling location that they used. In this case, since we used $255 for the rentals of the generator that they used to generate their laptops, and the tables that they used to sit down, and chairs and so forth, they will be replenishing $200 back to the account. So that totals $500 that, that this reconsideration will be bringing, so we can have more to spend on branding and outreach items to give out.
So just to clarify, then it's just an increase in the amount?
Mm-hmm.
That's the reconsideration?
Mm-hmm. I mean, the long and short of this, my understanding of this is in essence, we are at the end of our fiscal year, and we want to be able to use every...
Any.
Every last dime in the community because the bank account gets swept by Dunne at the end of the fiscal year, and whatever's left goes back up to the city. So, do I have any other public comment?
Hey, I first misunderstood when you said hands, hand radios. I understood that as tam radios. I was ready to jump all over you. But she clarified it very well, so, but since that was clarified, I do like to say to you board members, I really approve of this budget. We definitely need that money, and you as a board, and us that we know what you do, it'll help El Surino look better in terms of the board. So I hope that all of you overwhelmingly vote for that money, it's really needed.
Yeah, just so you guys know, I was, I was down at Dunne. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public comment, I apologize. Do I have any other public comment? Nope, okay. Board comment on this? Go around, Director Manzano? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know it might seem a little bit off-topic, but I'm curious on how the treasurer had her request for reconsideration placed on the agenda, the one I submitted is not included on the agenda.
Because the treasurer's request is time-sensitive.
Time-sensitive?
Time-sensitive. Do I have any?
Oh, I want a second. No, when I was the chair for the elections, we would just go out there and use verbal conversation with our stakeholders, and we had really nothing to give them. And then the following year, when I was on the Arts and Culture Committee and the Outreach Committee, we did pass out tote bags and pens, and it was very successful, and I'm actually a cameraman with them. So they do become branding items to help us to get the neighborhood council out there, so I would, I would go down this.
Do I have any other board comment? Director Cruz, Director Correio?
Come on, hold it.
Director Manzano?
I would like to encourage my fellow directors to approve and support this item here, but taking a look at it, and just hearing Cynthia mention about branding items, I do recognize that 30 t-shirts for board directors is considered branding or outreach, because it does say with LA 32 logo, and payment for street permit for the election day, which is passed already. But the table covers and the three sets of hand radios would fall under category 100, which is operations, since these hand radios would be utilized by the Neighborhood Council as needed for events and services to the public. But those radios, obviously, as the, at the last meeting, the treasurer and the president had indicated, that the hand radios are not donations, which basically they're not outreach, they will be used by the board for, or regular use by board members, those will fall under an operational expense. So I think it's correct that most of the money we transferred, which is $2,379.31, is allocated into outreach. And what I'm trying to indicate is that some of the items on this list are not outreach items.
Treasurer Crozante, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to increase it to $500. So I'd like to amend that we increase it to $500 because that's exactly what we need. I amend that we increase it $500 that LA 32 utilizes the end of this fiscal year funds to make the following purchases for a total of $2,879.31, for three sets of hand radios, 30 t-shirts for board directors with LA 32 logo, payment for street permit from election day, two table covers, and any remaining balance to be used to purchase LA 32 NC branding outreach items such as tote bags, lanyards, and pens.
Second.
That was you, correct?
Yes, I second her motion to increase it by 500. But she still doesn't answer the question that the radios are, since we understand that they're not being distributed to anybody, they are not an outreach item. We will be using them for our own functions, our own activities, our own services. Therefore, those radios become an operational expense.
Treasurer Crozante, did Dunne take any issue with this?
No, they did not. When we purchased them, they said we can use them for events or an outreach.
Okay. Well, there's the answer to that.
Do you have any public comment on that amendment?
Standby, I've got an amendment on the floor. So I've currently got a motion to amend the, item number seven, discussion of possible action regarding Treasurer Crozante's request for a reconsideration amendment on item 11 of the June 1st, 2016 agenda, that LA 32 Neighborhood Council utilize the end of fiscal year funds to make the following purchases total $2,879.31, for three sets of hand radios, 30 t-shirts for board directors with LA 32 logo, payment for street permit from election day, two table covers, and any remaining balance to be used to purchase LA 32 Neighborhood Council branding outreach items such as tote bags, lanyards, and pens. Do I have a, oh, I have a second from Director Manzano. You've got that, the motion and the second? Do I have any public comment on the, Mr. Chavez?
Hey, I'd like to say that the radios that you're going to buy, excellent, we've really been needing them for a long time. What I do like to say, that they're not going to be exclusively for you board members, even though that is the intent. It has to be some leeway in there, because what if we decide to help you in whatever activities you have, and there's not enough of you board members for that activity, but there is enough of us here, and we could use the radios, you know, communicate with a one board, because it's happened before, just one board member participates because the other ones were not available for whatever reason. That can happen down the line, just like the money, you don't know what you're going to use it for, you're holding back for. The same thing with the radios. You can't just lock it for you guys, because they're public money and they belong to all of us anyway, not just to you guys.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Masaca?
Just a couple of things. First, I was very confused with the reconsideration because I thought that was the same amount that we had on, that was on the June agenda. And now I'm thinking that that was the same amount, because is that why you just increased it 500? Okay, so, the reconsider. And then just a second point, just to avoid any problems, because there's a couple of people here that might bring them up later. You, you're supposed to first be, the motion is first to reconsider it or not. So right now, you're, is it even, are you guys even going to reconsider the motion? Yes or no? And then, how many see amended motion to reconsider?
Very correct.
So then I take back my amendment.
So I've got, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And again, under no circumstances should undue strictness be allowed to intimidate members or limit full participation, but thank you very much for pointing that out. So I've got a, are you, did you retract that motion?
Yes, I take back, I take back the amendment.
So there is a motion to reconsider, this is just a motion as to whether or not we're even going to have the conversation to reconsider the initial vote. So, before we make that amendment...
And that was the motion that I made, and Mr. Sevillez seconded, correct?
Yes. Okay. Okay, so, again, thank you very much for that. I've got a motion on the table to reconsider this, this vote on item 11 of the June 1st, 2016 agenda. So this is just to reconsider and therefore open the opportunity to make that amendment so we can spend all of that money. So this is whether or not you guys are willing to reconsider the vote that you, that has already been taken. Do we have any public comment on that? Do I have any board comment? Okay, without any public comment and without any board comment, I'm just seeing...
I have a public comment in regards to reconsideration. There was a comment made by a director that he had submitted a reconsideration request, and according to our bylaws, our bylaws state that reconsiderations are to be heard at the next board meeting. Doesn't specify special or regular. So if we're going to hear one, then there's an opportunity here that a director privileged to file reconsideration may not be, be in, except with his rights under the bylaws. Take that for record.
Thank you for your comments. Anyhow, I have a motion on the table. I'm moving straight to the vote. I'm just going to press my keys on this one and make this a roll call vote. Director Munoz?
Yes.
Director Manzano?
Yes, I accept the reconsideration.
Director Correio?
Yes.
Director Leo?
Yes.
Director Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Vargas?
No.
Treasurer Crozante's?
Yes.
Director Cruz?
Eligible.
Director Duñez, absent. Director Sevilla's?
Yes.
Director Verdugo's absent. Director Guzmán is absent. Director Sandoval?
Yes.
Director Lopez is absent, and me, yes. So nine, zero, zero, two, the motion to reconsider passes.
So I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to amend that we increase the amount to that reconsideration, $500.
I amend that we increase $500 that LA 32 utilizes the end of the fiscal year funds
to make the following purchases for a total of $2,879.31, with three sets of hand radios, 30 t-shirts for board directors with LA 32 logo, payment for street permit from election day, two table covers, and any remaining balance to be used to purchase LA 32 NC branding outreach items such as tote bags... such as tote bags, lanyards, and pens.
Second.
So I've got a motion on the table to amend with a second by Director Survillas, that L A thirty-two neighborhood council utilized the end of fiscal year funds to make the following purchases total two-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, for three sets of hand radios, thirty T-shirts for board director with L A thirty-two logo, payment for street permit from election day, two table covers, and any remaining balance to be used to purchase L A thirty-two neighborhood council branding outreach items, such as tote bags, lanyards, pens, and perhaps a partridge in the pear tree. Do I have any public comment on that? Do I have any board comment? You made it for spending the last of your money?
Yes.
Okay, so, this is the motion to amend now. This is another roll call vote. Director Munoz?
Yes.
Director Montano?
I agree.
Director Creo?
Yes.
Director Leo?
Yes.
Director Flores?
Yes.
Director Vargas?
No.
Vice President, sorry. Treasurer Crozantes?
Yes.
Director Cruz?
No.
Director Duñez is absent. Director Sevilla?
Yes.
Director Verdugo is absent. Director Guzmán is absent. Director Sandoval?
Yes.
Director Lopez is absent, and I vote yes.
Nine zero zero two.
So, now I have this on the agenda, as it is amended, that L A thirty-two neighborhood council utilized the end of fiscal year funds to make the following purchases total two-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, for three sets of hand radios, thirty T-shirts for board directors with L A thirty-two logo, payment for street permit from election day, two table covers, and any remaining balance to be used to purchase L A thirty-two neighborhood council branding outreach items, such as tote bags, lanyards, and pens. So I have a motion to approve the amended motion. The reconsidered amended motion.
I motion to move forth with a I O seven amended motion.
Do I have a second? Also. Treasurer Crozantes? Second by Director, Director Sandal. Do I have any public comment on the reconsidered amended motion?
Can you read that again for me, please?
I could read it. Discussion of possible action regarding Treasurer Crozantes' request for a reconsideration and amendment on item eleven of the June first, two thousand sixteen agenda, that L A thirty-two N C utilized the end of the fiscal year funds to make the following purchases total with amendment of five hundred dollar increase, two-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-nine-and-thirty-one for three sets of hand radios, thirty T-shirts for board directors to make the following purchases, I'm sorry, board directors with L A thirty-two logo, payment for street permit from election day, two table covers, and any remaining balance to be used to purchase L A thirty-two N C branding outreach items, such as tote bags, lanyards, and pens.
Okay, I like that. This is a slight adjustment to be made, but I think we've all made our teeth on that. Set our teeth. Thank you.
Do I have any other public comment? Do I have any, any board comment? Okay, so we will move the vote, move to vote. I think everybody's pretty familiar with the motion as it stands.
She gets ready.
Director Munoz?
Yes.
Director Montano?
Yes, I accept.
Director Creo?
Yes.
Director Leo?
Yes.
Director Flores?
Yes.
Vice President Vargas?
Eligible.
Treasurer Crozantes?
Yes.
Director Cruz?
No.
Director Duñez is absent. Director Sevilla?
Yes.
Director Verdugo is absent. Director Guzmán is absent. Director Sandoval?
Yes.
Director Lopez is absent, and I vote yes. So by a vote of nine zero zero two, item number seven, as it stands, passes. Moving along to item number eight. Discussion, discussion of possible action regarding a board retreat for training and team building. This is just to open up discussion as possible action. We don't need a motion to come out of this at all. But this is just an opportunity to inform you guys that the budget that you just passed does have an amount for a retreat in there. This is an opportunity for us to get together. It is, it is open to the public, so to address the public concerns. It has to be, there's no ground violations happening here. But I just wanted to give the opportunity to start a conversation, so we don't wait another month if anybody wants to throw anything out there or create a committee. But the objective here is for us to be able to get together along with our stakeholders and have a conversation about what our goals are as directors, what everybody got into the neighborhood council for. Little getting to know you, getting to like you opportunity. It does, it is governed, again, by all the mandatory Brown Act requirements. So it is a good idea. We do need to have it, you know, within our district, and it does have to be posted. But it can be, generally, what my understanding is, other neighborhood councils, they're, they can be about four to six hours. We can do a whole day. It starts to seem, maybe that's a long time. But again, that's totally up to however you guys wanted to sign it. I personally don't really care for the idea of a, the terminology retreat, simply because it sounds like we're going to Aruba or something. This is just an opportunity to have a conversation that's both open and not quite so restricted by Robert's rules and things like that. So if anybody else wants to have any, if anybody else has any thoughts about that, and Dunn would, Dunn does generally administer it. So they do some training for us as well.
They do the presentations.
They do the presentation. Director Vargas?
Yeah, so I think it's a great idea. So I think if there's a consensus among directors that this is something we should do, rather than sending this to a committee, I think the board should appoint one person to come back next month with some recommendations on places we can. That's my.
Better if you have a committee, because you have more input.
That's my.
Do you have any other comments from any directors?
In the past, we've used it, in your sense, as our location to me. That could be an option. I don't think we've gone to any, to any other locations. That was an option to change that.
I mean, Cal State LA has facilities we could go to. I mean, I can't speak for them, maybe they wouldn't want us, but we could go to a restaurant like La Costina or another restaurant. We can have this catered, we can have, you know, a small lunch. I can't imagine that although we approved a thousand dollars for this, unless we're having steak and lobster.
Why not?
Well, I can think of several reasons why not.
I, I, I like to say, maybe we go somewhere where, where it's nature, like spacious. The last former board, we did it at Barrio Axet, and it was a really tight squeeze little room, and, and we barely, you know, fit there with our stakeholders. And somewhere big and nice, so we can really, you know.
More friendly.
They get to know each other, and, you know, that kind of stuff. I just, maybe somewhere.
I think the opposite of the conversation.
You know. I know there's a lot of nice places in, I, I mean, I know, I don't know, there's somewhere in El Sereno, maybe that Christian church in Anhan, Anhan, what is it, Eastern, or maybe something in Alhambra. Or, I mean, I know there's got to be places that have it. They charge by the day, most places charge twenty, thirty, maybe forty, depending what the food is. And we have to keep in mind that we have to feed our stakeholders too. You know, so maybe get some.
Open to them.
Maybe get something going like a sign-in or a minimum that we know. So we buy enough food for them too.
Bring my whole rasa.
Maybe, maybe a committee. Maybe a committee, so that committee could bring different, different venues, different prices, different foods. And like that we can all vote on one of the three, four menu, locations or venues that we bring. I think it'd be nice if the committee did it.
Again, Vice President, I appreciate what you're saying, but just in the spirit of transparency and things like that, I, I think it would be nice to, to have perhaps an, like, for Treasurer Crozantes, so an ad hoc committee. You know, and it doesn't have to take a year and a half to put it together, but.
Is it springing back?
An opportunity for more people to be involved. Do I have any public comment on this?
Yeah, can I nominate Michelle to head that ad hoc committee?
Cannot nominate anybody.
Public comment? Thank you, because you're doing such a great job. But I wanted to mention, it's a great idea. I think you guys are going to use food from different vendors to help promote our businesses within El Sereno and get a little bit from each one of them. So at the same time, we're giving it back to our community.
That's an excellent idea.
Charlie's Creo?
Just for your record, we cannot use any funds to purchase alcohol. I want to make everybody clear on that.
I just, and also, I'd like to make a clarification. The, a lot of vendors here in El Sereno do not have the new, the, the treasurer's card has a chip. Because that's the new thing that is now, the chip, the credit card with the chip. Woodfordless does not allow the chip to use it as a credit card. You are forced to do a PIN number. In parallel, when I activated the card, I had to create a PIN number. But then I had to give them that PIN number, so they could change it, because they don't want no one using a PIN number to withdraw, because when you have a PIN number, you can withdraw cash. So a lot of the vendors here in El Sereno do not recognize, they don't have the updated version. I don't know what it's called. They don't have the updated, where you put in the card. And I can even say option credit card, because it goes straight to debit, and it does not let me do credit, and I'm forced to do PIN. And I'm now sitting there going, well, I don't have a PIN number. So I have to go do business somewhere else. Big Saver lets me do it. I believe there's some few venues that do, but it's just a matter of finding out. So if, in the future, when we're looking for venues or places to eat food, know that, keep that in mind, that some places here don't allow it. I don't know why, they just, they had to update it.
I was just at Dunn the other day, and we are not the only neighborhood council that's having some glitches with pins and new chips, and they're working it out.
Good, yeah, because I didn't send it mine. But certainly.
You know, in the past, including now, the new board here, board members can get refunded their money if it's approved by the board ahead of time to avoid that particular problem of the chip, because we all know about the chips nowadays. So if that happens, if you know you're going to have an activity, one of you people might want to use your card, your credit card, to buy whatever it is that was already approved by you, because they went to a committee or whatever, whatever the process is. But it has to be approved by the board. If it is, then any of you can get reimbursed. We, the public, cannot get reimbursed, but you board members can.
Just a recommendation on that retreat. I was involved in an event a few weeks back. It was a city function, it was of the Autobahn Center at Debs Park. They do have an indoor classroom environment, as well as a lot of open space to have a small, maybe, you know, a couple mile hike, if that's preferred. But you have a lot of, it's a tranquil environment, and they do have caterers come in and things of this nature. Just a recommendation.
What if I want to hike, and I want to run, and I want to run instead?
They'll need a hike, it's plenty of classroom, air-conditioned rooms, accommodations, everything and everybody.
That, that's an excellent idea. When, when we, you know, we start doing team building stuff, just as a, so you guys know, when it comes to hikes and things like that, everything we do has to be ADA compliant. So we can't have a, you know, let's, let's do a team building, let's all go for a hike, and sorry folks, you guys came home, but.
Well, it's place can accommodate well.
Okay.
You've got to accommodate my pain, don't forget. It likes to walk too.
Pardon me?
I was going on.
I have just one quick comment. Your business and economics committee, if this would be a great, instead of creating an ad hoc committee, have your business and economic committee take it over, so they create that relationship with the local businesses.
Excellent.
That's one excellent idea. Is that your comment?
No, I just wanted to be acknowledged by the president.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. The idea of the retreat, and there's a lot of pressing, the one thing that should be a priority of this board, is the fact that there's so many major issues going on when in the city of Los Angeles. Issues of gentrification, D W P reform, public safety, U S C biotech corridor, for example, could have major impact on the future of this community. Okay? We have development issues going on in this community. The main concern here is that it's not so much a board retreat, make it an inclusive community retreat. Hear what the community has to say, and then come up with a strategic plan how to deal with these various issues that you could look at as a benchmark from the day you start it until the end of the term. Okay? A good point was made in the last board. How many community impact statements have been filed by this neighborhood council on the last two years, four years, six years, eight years? Especially on major projects or major issues affecting stakeholders. I would say all the fingers on its hand are probably still with a section of one or two. Okay? Your responsibility, Nick Pacheco said this when he was councilman, is that Nick Pacheco said the role of neighborhood councils is outreach, to be that conduit between the community and the office holder. And also, what I would recommend too, is also this panel have a regular meeting scheduled with council staff on these issues too. So once again, you are that conduit. You're getting information from your stakeholders, and you're disseminating that to the council staff on a, on a regular basis, and the community can see how that, that information is being transferred from one party to the other. It's very important here not to get caught up on the funding issues. The funding issues should be looked at as operating expense. But your number one concern is when you now in panel have this new body, is to increase awareness, to empower outreach, and to grow participation.
Mr. Chavez?
He's absolutely correct in what he's saying. I would just like to add, piggyback to that. In terms of dealing with the council office, which has a peak project I face all the time, a councilman, since you're all fairly new, you may know Mr. Julio Torres. He was here in the Wednesday meeting. They always send somebody, if somebody's available, they make it in their calendar to be available for the Wednesday meetings, okay? This is special meetings, a little different. So there is always communication, they know right, right off the bat, what you people are voting for, what you're discussing, what they discuss, you know, for public comment on the different motions. So they're up to date on everything pretty much, you know? So I feel that, as I told him before, however he feels about a point, which is fine, he's entitled to that, get the people that think like him, march them down, and get an appointment with the councilman, and he'll listen to him and the people that he takes over there. Why are we taking a stab at the council office when they have people come here to a regular Wednesday board meeting?
Thank you, sir. Do I have any more public comment? Any more board comment?
I'd like to give a little input. I think it's proper and acceptable that the Department of Neighborhood Enforcement assists with training, adequate classes or courses on what's needed. And it's apparent that any of new members might need it. I would suggest that this retreat last between four and six hours. Of that time, maybe the Department of Neighborhood Enforcement can give the training within a two-hour period. The remaining four hours would be with community members, directors like ourselves, stakeholders, because it's a retreat for us to build and provide services and, you know, work for our community. It's not the department's neighborhood council, this is the L A thirty-two neighborhood council. So if they come, which obviously they will, it's not, it should not be their intent to be there for the whole duration of the retreat, because that's still them guiding us, directing us, influencing us, how we should serve our stakeholders. I've done this for the last ten years, and that's what they want. They want to tell us what they want from Dunn. And this is not the Dunn's Neighborhood Council. This is L A thirty-two Neighborhood Council. We represent the stakeholders in our community, not the people in City Hall. So when we have this retreat, welcome Dunn, and after two hours, send them home.
I don't have any motion. Do I have a motion? I really like what Angela said. I thought those are great ideas about having multiple businesses involved. Do I have a motion? I really like what Angela said, I thought those are great ideas about having multiple businesses involved.
They do have a committee that, like she mentioned.
I know, it was the next thing that I was gonna say, Mr. Chavez. With that idea, we, we do have to be careful, we probably, again, I don't know for sure, I can't speak for them, but if we were to say select La Cucina, I suspect they probably wouldn't want a bunch of food from other vendors coming in. So we probably, if we wanna do that, which again, I think is a great idea, we would wanna select a neutral, like Troy said, or the senior center, whatever.
Technically.
But, and I, and I think that's a good idea to, again, select someplace a little bit more neutral than draw all the business towards one, one particular private business. But having said that, you know, we tossed around the idea of an ad hoc committee, but again, I like the idea of this just going to an already formed committee. Does that sound good to you guys?
They're not here, are they? The chairman, to ask her if they wanted to come?
Business and economics?
Is, uh.
I actually don't have that, that authority, but I mean, we can assign things to the committee without, actually, I'm about to change that committee too, so I think so I'll be excited to, it's.
Winning.
And Director Guzman is also on it. So, see, that's what happens when you don't show up, you get more work. You get volunteer for stuff. So I don't need a motion for that.
Great, great question. Do we know approximately where the debate would be?
You tell me. You guys tell me, I mean, do we wanna try to do this as quickly as possible, so, I mean, my, my position on that is to do it as soon as possible, so we all kinda know where each other stand and, but at the same time, I don't wanna do it so soon that everybody's throwing their schedules around and. Just general thoughts, I'm open, does anybody? But I mean, in general, like, yeah, I mean, I think it would almost have to be on a weekend.
July 30th?
So I'm hearing the end of July?
July 30th, Saturday?
I'd rather kinda like, rather let the committee put the whole thing together, but I just kinda wanna hear general ideas as to, end of July, sound good to most everybody? Anybody like, hey, I wanna do it a whole heck of a lot sooner, or, hey, I wanna do it a whole heck of a lot later?
What are you guys' caligurs? Look at your caligurs.
I think the end of July is a good timeframe, and I do like Troy's suggestion of using an offsite location. I don't think that it's proper if we go to, like you said, La Cucina, and you're using other outside vendors in their location. But if you use this, which we have in the past at the Korean church right around Eastern, you can get three vendors. They have adequate space, it's a neutral location, it's centrally located. I do like the Autobahn Center location, it's not in our jurisdiction, it falls under lines with your three one, I believe it's part of the Royal Second Neighborhood Council, but I'm sure they'll be inviting, Saturday's fine, and between four to six hours.
Director Chavez?
I have a personal bias against the weekend of July 30th. My birthday.
So apparently, we're going to have a retreat and birthday party for Director Surillis. Make sure the record reflects that we're already spending taxpayer money on Director Surillis's birthday.
Like to note, that's 19th birthday, again. Great.
So unless I'm mistaken, I can just refer this back down to a committee without any, any motion or anything. So it seems like an excellent idea to have the business and economics committee handle this, convene pretty quickly, come back to some recommendations. Hopefully, they can get this on the agenda before the July meeting, and we'll get all this light out. Does that sound good to everybody? Anybody, probably board, anybody wanna, might have comments on it?
Actually, I just have a question. So the training that we get during this retreat, I mean, is that the same training that you can get from the online, so I've been through all those things, I know, and more stuff, just to.
It's a craft program.
Yeah, same thing.
No, it's not the same thing. No, it's not, no, it's not, it's not the same thing, it's not. What, what they do, they, they kinda walk you through what the, you know, the agenda, a motion, a second, amend, kinda like what we're doing here.
The whole process.
So we understand why we're amending or, you know, discussion, what does that mean? They kinda explain it when the motion is on table, so you know what's happening. They, they should've done, they should've done that actually on the, when we took office.
That's actually, Tom made, made that, that comment that he would, he would have liked to have done it that night, but wanted to let the committees get assigned, so, um, so yeah, so they'll, they'll still wanna do that. But I mean, as far as how the retreat runs, it's actually up to us and the stakeholders to decide. Like Director Manzano said, it's not for Dunn to come in and say, you guys are gonna do this, it's up to us to say what we want Dunn to do and what we wanna do ourselves, and, you know, if just, we wanna do some team building amongst the fifteen, obviously, it's open for the stakeholders, but if, you know, we wanna, say this getting to know you game or certain things, stuff like that, so. Again, I'll send it down to business and economics, and hopefully, they'll come back pretty quickly with the recommendation. We're almost done, guys, this is actually, but moving on to item number, number nine. As far as committees and chairs, I have accepted Vice President Vargas's resignation from the Bylaws Committee. But conveniently enough, I've got Director Lopez was chomping at the bit to be on that committee. So I'd like to appoint Director Lopez to Bylaws Committee, and I'd also like to appoint Director Lopez to Business and Economics, because he had volunteered, and we don't, we currently only have two people on that committee, so it kinda worked out perfectly.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be as a stakeholder on that, the Bylaws Committee.
Sir, we actually already have that committee full.
You can have limitless, you don't have to be some.
You can, you can attend those meetings in common.
But you already have a stakeholders that, that you've selected up to appoint it to that? I'm not talking about board members, talking about stakeholders.
There's a full committee.
The Bylaws Committee is full right now, because I'm, I'm appointing Director Lopez and, Director Lopez to Bylaws, and Director Lopez to Business and Economics. I will take a vote on that, just to get board approval, do I have any approval?
Let me, yeah. To assist perhaps in what the stakeholders here is mentioning here, I think it would have been a reasonable expectation, just, just very reasonable, that the committees to be appointed would be listed on the agenda. Because there could be, I'm just gonna make a number up, ten stakeholders that wanna be on a committee. But since they don't know which committee is gonna be appointed, is it, they say, well, maybe it's occupied. But had it said environmental green, or bylaws, or sports and recs, whatever needs to be filled, it could be a reasonable expectation that that stakeholder would have made an extra effort to be here, because they have, maybe they have influence, maybe they have, which is for invested interest, they wanna participate. But without basically indicating which of the committees to be filling, I believe it leaves the stakeholders at a, at a, maybe not for community, but at a loss of being able to participate, because why the knowledge is not provided?
Do we note that this is, this is annotated on the agenda the same way it was when we actually originally filled the committee, so this is just a great, a minor change. But again, I'm making an appointment of Director Lopez to Bylaws and Business and Economics. Do I see a hand or is that like a public comment? Oh, yeah.
Oh, are you ready for me? So I think that's a good idea, so if you wanna give community participation, you wanna put the committees in separate, because then you'll know where the interest is. So for example, land use is one of my interests, I'm gonna definitely start going to land use and public safety. But I would have liked to have known that the committee was open and that there were possible stakeholder positions as well, I have no idea. So you fill them with three directors, and maybe something to consider in the near future is maybe adding stakeholders to the committee, because it does help.
Stakeholders also have a voting during that committee.
That is correct, really noted. Mr. Chavez, you're on.
Yes, I think a lot of these agenda items, I know there's what the Robert, Robert ruled the board to say, the Brown Act say, but it's also what do you do to increase community participation? And to get more people here to get engaged and get involved. And let, let Director Manzano and, and Angelica say, I think there's no problem, there should be no problem is when you craft your agenda to show that, implore that turnout, what you're crafting your document based upon whatever vernacular you wanna use, okay? You're gonna find out, with fifteen board members compared to twenty-one previously. We know right now, Bar Melon Green, it's not an active committee, and it's a standing committee under the bylaws. And I was a chair of that committee at one time. And also too, we have a lot, we, we should not forget, in this community, we have a very good K through twelve environmental science program at our elementary, middle, and high schools, okay? And so in a sense, that population is being disenfranchised by not having people on that committee. On the other hand, too, your stakeholders, where do you grow your future board members? A lot of times, your future board members come from these committee members. So I think that's what you have to do, is like Anthony's saying, is that you read the agenda, well, we don't know what's going on, but when you make that extra effort, depending on whatever vernacular you wanna use, whatever verb you wanna use, is to support people to come out, then, then do it. And use whatever mediums you can, whether it's a Facebook page, your website, to foster that. I'm telling you right now, we, you know, twelve, fifteen people in these standing committees, you have a lot of work ahead of you. And the more bodies you have, the easier it's gonna be on everybody, so you don't burn out so fast.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez, your criticism is always off on the shoot. Did you wanna, because I, I can put that on there, do you want to volunteer for the Environmental Green Committee?
My summertime, erecting parks at this age time of year, all the little kids are out of school, I had forty-five at the park today, and I was the only staff.
But I would say that's a, you put it for the agenda, the next general meeting, as to maybe any other stakeholder might be interested.
Absolutely, I can continue to keep environmental green on the, on the agenda, hopefully, somebody volunteers.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
The names that you just mentioned, you did not mention their position, whether they're chairs or board members for those particular committees.
I did, I'm not, none of the chairs have changed, we are one minute away from adjournment, so unless we're going to motion to extend this meeting, I'm placing Director Lopez on Business and Economics and Bylaws. Do I have, I'm gonna take a board vote really quickly on that, do I have any extensions on that vote? Do I have any nays on that? And do I have, then I can assume that all in favor, Director Lopez joining Bylaws and Business and Economics? We've gotten through the agenda, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Wait, I, I got a request to make, I'm sorry, I apologize. What I wanna ask, because again, being a stakeholder now, I wanna be, my name put back on Facebook or whatever it is, so when you have a special meeting, I'll find out, just like they find out, okay? That's also open to us.
We can, we can talk sometimes, can I get a motion for adjournment?
But, but I have to ask, they don't know that I want it.
I motioned to adjourn the meeting at eight oh three.
I second it.
I second. I have to wait, who works my second? I've got actually eight oh one, so motion to adjourn at eight oh one, second, Kathy, who you, all in favor?
It has been updated.
Thanks, guys, good job.
Good to see you get out.